Five oh six P M. And call this meeting to order. Have approval of the agenda. Yeah, table the old business Joel is not here. Okay. Time we'll open up to public comment.
Public comment, that mean?
No, we got you on the agenda. Janet, we have been just a minute. If you want to, I don't think we can.
I don't like a motion that we lend the Janet to, for Janet's first time.
Alright. Okay.
Second.
Alright. Alright, Ms. Ward, you got the floor.
I'm here to discuss the water system in Milltown. From my base in Milltown all the way up to my house inclusive. The day after past. Or I say six, seven weeks, I contacted the office, town office here for various things. And out of those times that I've called mailing students about water situation, not one person from the town has called me back or come up there to check out our problem. Uh, in that time period, I had a, a new person move into one of their houses and bought all new washing machines, refrigerator, ice machine, all that stuff, because the houses I'm fixing now are basically new inside now. And uh, didn't think about it and she didn't either. She thought that the water system was okay. Now they had a big breakdown here, it's long part and she thought part of it was adjusted to that with all the dirt stuff coming through the water. This is off of the town system af- before the meter. And before I get down in these new meters look like, I mean, old meters, it's not that old. I remember when these ones put in. There's not, there's less than a quarter of an inch and that's not mud. That's solid material. They're having water pressure in there is so low. I wish that, did the guy, working guys not listen come in here too? He took the video of the water pressure. Water coming out of that meter and all the meters including mine comes out water and instead of shooting like they supposed to, comes out and just falls straight down. So video here.
I, I seen the video that Chris was talking.
Chris, okay, good. So there is no pressure up there at all. Many times, even if it isn't raining, it looks like this. Uh, there are no, I don't know the word for it. Safety valves on our system that whenever they come and drain the hydrant at the end of my driveway. If they don't go and turn the meters off, which they never have, I make them do that because they can be responsible if they don't, which it should be. It sucks all water out of the houses. And then when they feed, they drain that hot water heater. Then when they turn that hot water, that, or hot water heater, hydrant, there you go. When they drain that hydrant. And all that water turn back on and turn, all that water comes, the first thing that comes from that hydrant is the mud. What gets to each house and that house goes, sucks it back up. So when you first turn on your air, your water. You've got tons of air that gets trapped in ice makers, washing machines and anything else that uses water. The man in particular I'm talking about is gonna, is gonna talk to the board about getting a new refrigerator, uh, washing machine, because it just literally tore his, uh, it couldn't suck enough water into the pump. Brand new. I'm aggravated because we're still at the end of the system on the old line. I don't know what amount, I've heard it was a pretty big massive amount of money. And yet you've given these little meters. It looks like a china toy. It's plastic, the new meters are. And you're putting it on a galvanized line. Your workers are gonna have to spend twice as much time putting them in because if you're not careful with those metal strips, it strips that piece of plastic all to pieces. I mean, just one torque too much and it's coated up. It has, they said it had a filter in it. Fine, great. But when you look at that filter, it's maybe an inch big. Alright, here's my point. In an inch big. Water system, little filter strainer that gets the water. It ain't okay, sure. Alright. You think that, size wise. An inch size filter. Yeah, I lost it. That is over a quarter of an inch. Let's give it a week. And you've got this stuff, junk and trash coming through your mouth. Reckon how long it's gonna be before the pound's called up there again to undig that thing, take that tiny screen off and get all the trash out of it. I think it's time for a new system up at Milltown and a brand new line connected onto the new line. I took a quart of water. Out of my bathtub, which I figured was the cleanest place. And had it tested a hundred times too much higher in the water. A hundred times. Joey can vouch for that. They could not believe it. That's from your old system. I want clean water to drink and I deserve it. So does everybody else. Now Milltown might be one of your lower areas in the town, but not anymore. Those houses are getting fixed and I got good people in them. They deserve clean water just like you do, just like I do. They need to get off that old system and get connected on to the new system, get that old terracotta. Line in that old, what is it? I guess iron out. It's time. You've got the money and you're putting it into all kinds of, fix the system first. I don't want to see it like that. I got grandkids coming up. I got grand grandkids coming up. I'm tired of it still being on a seventy year old system. And at the end of the line to boot. Now Tom, he was smart. He got connected on across the creek on the new system. But why should I have to pay? To have it connected all the way across the creek and under the creek on the new system when it should come right up to me, just like every other house and then to my house. I'll pay for it on my side to the house, but not before. Or after. Yeah, before, should right. Now, I don't know what y'all do, what y'all say, if you've ever seen junk like that, but I see it every weekend. It does, you cannot wash a load of white clothes. Impossible. And many of my current clothes don't look nice. They're dingy. They're nasty. Even in the cleanest water, you still have this junk. So. I'm aggravated because it's gone on way too long. Way too long. And I don't know what you're deciding, but I need done decided now to get it done and get it, get us some new work up through there. I've heard that it's done in patches up on Milltown. I was gonna ask you to come through to find out because I know some that knows. But at the end of Milltown, you've got cast iron. Then they said it can go up a little ways and you've got PVC. Then you've got a little bit more and you've got cast iron. Why? That doesn't make any sense. Why not start at the end and fix it all the way up and be done with it? Well, where, somebody tell me, where's the new system line at? Comes up Long Creek?
That's actually, we've been working on that. That's where we've put our, been putting our efforts in and replacing these old lines. And we've putting the wells in up on Long Creek and.
When did you last work there?
I can't tell you that.
I don't think, about ten years ago. I don't think that.
Well. Some of the PVC top versus the terracotta or whatever, it's where that it has busted before and they've had to replace it.
No, I'm talking about the old cast iron.
Oh, the cast iron.
And that's not replaceable. That's a, and they've been replaced. Uh, what do you call it? PVC with cast iron. This is old junk.
Well, I'm gonna be honest with you Janet, you're not the first one that's come and expressed your concerns about your water. We are, we know it. We're working. I've, I've been trying to work with Congressman Edwards's office to get the money for it. The whole town. Water system needs replaced.
Didn't you not get a big grant recently?
There was some grants that went toward other stuff, but it was, it was already written for, for those specific needs.
What were these needs?
I don't know all of the needs. Some of the needs were for the, the stuff that's going on Laura Street. Some of the stuff was.
It was on Sweetwater. We replaced the line up on Sweetwater and then we got.
How long was that system?
It was, it was, it was really bad. It was. And then we're trying to get lines replaced on Eight Oa Street, Circle Street. And.
Wasn't that done about fifteen years ago, whenever I was down in there starting those houses and it was all dug up all the way up through there? And new lines put in, what was that?
Not where this is at on Eight Oa Street, where the sidewalk used to be, or where the sidewalk used to be. Where, where the line is under that, so we're having to replace the line before we can replace the sidewalk. So it's been there for.
So you're talking about on the main part of Eight Oa Street?
Yeah, across from your houses there, where you're, where you're talking about, right across the street.
We have to them for like a three point one million dollar assistance for this very reason.
I don't, I, I, I may be wrong here, but the, who got the grant? I was thinking it was a town, it was twenty-three million.
No.
That's, that's.
I'd got, um, I'd worked with Gillespie's office to get a grant for Old Sweetwater and the Eight Oa Street projects. And then we also got a grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission.
How much were they?
Uh. I'm, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the Appalachian Regional Commission grants for the new well system and for the new meters. And the one that came from Gillespie was for those lines.
Well, I, you know, I don't know what to tell you, but I know that this should be something done now. You know, I don't care if you put fail safe sign on the thing up there to keep the black pressure of the fire hydrant, which keeps our water fairly clean, but don't suck it out of the houses and ruin. I mean, every time they do that by winter, I've had to replace thirty-four, uh, or more hot water heaters because they don't get turned off. They don't have. Safety things on hot water heaters. Um, it sucks the water out of the hot water heaters and they've got hot water heaters left on and while they're working on it, it gets driven out. So. Why not get the system at least put on, it's gonna get the trash out so that what, they don't have to come around and if they can't do that, then whoever drains the water on the fire hydrant. Get up there and take ten minutes of their time and shut the darn water off to each house so it don't suck it back out. That's the least you could do.
Yeah.
You know, and it starts somewhere. This has been going on literally for twenty years. And I know there's been enough money through the system that could have been fixed, big chunks between now and then. And, uh, what'd you say the name of that governor was?
Um, it's not a governor. It's Chuck Edwards. His van will be. Yeah, Senator.
Well.
No, he's a, he's a representative. He's, you're not a congress representative, not a, not a senator.
He will be here, his van will be here in July. You need to come and talk to them.
I would love to. I'd like to show him.
I have sent several people there to express their concerns about the water.
He'll be in front of the post office Tuesday at ten o'clock.
What?
This upcoming Tuesday.
Is coming Tuesday?
Is it? No, I'm sorry. It's the following Tuesday, the fifteenth of the Tuesday.
We have to deal with this type of water until God knows when. And I won't put down the basic rate along with all of Milltown because that's basic, that's under grade water. I shouldn't have to be paying full town process for this water. None. So I think all of Milltown, at least where my little houses is and my home inclusive, needs to be on basic rate. That's fair. And you know it. So, and I can't tell you how many times I've seen bills go up.
Janet, is it worse than the rental houses or your house are about to sign?
My house and rental houses is one in the same, off the same system. And it, and I, another question, am I on the old system that was supposed to have been shut down about fifteen, twenty years ago?
I don't know. I wasn't here then. I don't know.
Nobody knows what system I'm on. I'm not supposed to be on that line. It was supposed to have been closed off, but that's before her time, but she needs to look into it too. That system was supposed to have been thrown off state and can deal. And I think I'm still on it. Because it comes in and I'm at the very end of the line. So if I'm at the very end of the line, if the, uh, line existed four years ago, I'm still getting the same order. So yeah, I'm on the same system.
Yeah, we'll talk to Chad. See what they can do, see what the cost is, see if.
Oh, uh, Janet, I'll talk to the engineer and see what we could do about, you know, how much it would cost to.
Well, all you gotta do is bring one line. If the line is over on Long Creek, you're just gonna have to find a good place to come across underground and then take it up the backside. I don't know where your line is. Is there a line on Milltown's side of New at all? The line runs down in front of Long Creek and on across the bridge.
Yeah, there's a line that comes down Long Creek.
So it shouldn't be, and go, yeah, goes up Long Creek.
Yeah, right across the creek from you.
So where's the shortest point between that, closest point to Milltown side that you could come across? If the new line were across underneath the creek.
Yeah, probably right where the bridge is there. You know where the bridge is at? When you used to could drive through Milltown to Long Creek?
Bridge. My bridge?
Yeah, right there. You could probably connect right there. So, I mean, I'm just.
Tom has a place already connected in from his house underneath the creek. Um, but that would be too far to go from there and then to go up. If he's, he's further up on the mountainside than I am toward the creek. But you need to find a joint place that's the closest to the main road of Long Creek. Come across and then make a line all the way up and down Long Creek, one line, and then let each house connect onto there. Now that's the best way, but you need to find the shortest route so that it's not so much power, uh, drain on the town system. I mean, if somebody's got a piece of land through there somewhere. So. And I, I've got a piece of land for that matter. I don't care, but it needs to be on the outside edges of my line, of my, my. It's my land, not on the middle of it, going right down the middle. So.
We will look into it. You've been calling here for six weeks and you've not got anybody to answer. I don't know what to say about that.
I didn't know anything about Janet. You brought to my attention yesterday.
Now, if you've been going through this for twenty years, I've been sitting on this board for eight years and this is the first I've known.
Well, it, it goes since first. You know, it'd get alright for a while and we'd be okay. Now this time it's hit a critical point again. So that's where I'm at. But yeah, come here before.
I feel your frustrations. I do.
Yeah, it's, it's not good and it's not easy and I don't think it is all healthy. So, I mean, that's a lot of rock, a lot of rust too. Erosive piping and everything. Do you want your kids drinking that? I don't. And it's not worth me paying a ton of money for it. So I'd like, like I said, I'm gonna reduce enough rates. And I think everybody up there in the Milltown houses, and I don't know how far it goes, that there's as bad as it is at the Monell houses, it might be a place where they bought the CPVC they built it. But I guarantee it's on the same system. So, how long is your, in your opinion, do you think that this is gonna take?
I, I, I don't have an opinion about it. All I can do is just address the, the issue. Talk with Chad, let Chad talk with the engineer and then him and the engineers see if they can come up with an issue with a, a way to solve it. Well. I mean, everybody wants their water to be solved and we just now, we've worked and worked and worked and just now got it to where the, the old Sweetwater ones, we've seen that from them too.
I don't know what to tell you. I just think it, you know. More needs to get done. I mean, it just, this water system should have been tackled years ago and just kept going, straight on. But I've seen years where they've not done really nothing on it. You know?
Well, we are working on it. We are.
Yeah, I've seen some work going on. So, uh, I didn't mean to say that you're not now, but it needs to keep going from one system, get it finished and right into the next one that needs it. And now we're at a critical point on Long Creek because you're getting ready to put in new meters. Honestly, in my opinion, I don't think we need a brand new meter up Milltown right now. None. Because why put a brand new meter that's a piece of plastic on an old. Cast iron system that in, I'll guarantee you that house you just put one on up Milltown, in a week's time, it'll be corroded over. You'll be having to break out the middle pieces of plastic to hold all the gravel and the dirt because it will get clogged up. I thought it's a filter system. No, it's just a little plastic piece of, plastic is all it is. So, and that's where I stand and I won't back down until it does get fixed. So, and I will see your Edwards. I'd like to be put on whatever agenda if you're the one.
You just show up at their, at the van, they take your name and then take you in.
And where is it supposed to be?
At the parking lot down at Ingles.
Ingles.
On the post office side.
Post office side.
Mm-hmm.
And July?
July the fifteenth, is that right?
Yep, July fifteenth to ten A, ten A M. It, it's in the, it's in the newspaper too. It'll be, it's in the newspaper as well. It'll be in our calendar reviews for the next two weeks.
July fifteenth, Edwards.
It's a Tuesday morning.
What is he, did you say?
He's a U, United States Representative for this, he's our, he's our congressman, representative for his district.
Congressman?
Yes.
As representative. From ten to eleven fifteen, July fifteenth.
I am, right?
Mm-hmm.
Edwards.
But now the funding for the other water lines, I got that from our state rep is in Gillespie. He's the one that got that for us.
Okay, then tell him we've got a, same, what did you tell him you had a problem with?
Uh, water lines on Old Sweetwater.
Okay, so address it again.
Yes.
You know, get another one. Say, hey dude, as soon as we get this one done, can we have another? We've got another section just like it. And again, why don't you just say, can you give us funds to fix Grand Canyon's whole water system? The only one that's going to water is they tell us, or Sweetwater.
Thing about Edwards. They wanted a match for that fund that you're talking about. If we do get it, the town would have to pay a large portion of it.
Okay, then find some other way or do whatever or match them. I mean, match what we can. I don't know what we try. I've never asked about the budget, but I'm sure that something can be done.
I agree.
Sixteen eleven, so July the fifteenth, ten o'clock, Congressman Edwards. Uh, make sure I get it all down and answer this. What's his main purpose of coming?
He just comes to hear people's concerns and stuff. Some of it's, it's just all different sorts of issues that he can help out. They do.
Um, I, I cover it. I think about everything, but I need that system to, I need you to tell me, you're gonna tell your worker, whoever it is, when they come up here to believe that fire hydrant, that they're gonna go cut off each. Let me call them things. I lose my friend of thought. Meter, each meter at every house so that the water don't get sucked out of the line and it pulls in that first initial mud. Cause that's exactly what happens.
We will talk to them.
And to get that done, that'll help soon. At least I can see an effort. You know, cause I've already talked to the ones that mainly come up and turn off the hydrant. They know that they better put a line to it, stretch it out over the grass because they've gone up my driveway last time and washed it down the road. So, uh, that and then get on it as soon as you can. I just, I wanna see better quality. And that, uh, reduced rate would be nice at least until it gets it fixed.
But I will talk to our engineer Janet and we'll see what options we've got about.
You know, come in on reduced rates, you can do it.
I, I don't, I don't, I'm not part of that. She's the girl that pulls up all that. We can look at it and see.
I don't, I'm paying just as measured more as anybody else. I shouldn't be equal to somebody.
What, what does she mean by a basic rate? Does basic mean it's inside city limits?
I don't know. What was you asking for Janet?
I want set down on my rates. I shouldn't be paying high, high prices for water when I do not have high price quality water. I don't have your interest, but I do know you have a lower rate and a higher rate.
We have an in-town rate and an out-of-town rate.
Okay, I probably get an out-of-town rate and I shouldn't have to be paying that. I know there should be something that can be decreased on it.
I think it's just based, I mean, by the ordinances it's posed, that that's just the line, right? If it's in or out, there's not a provision like exceptions, except in or out of the city limits.
Okay, then I want inner city limits rates until it gets fixed. I don't have order quantity to pay what we're paying.
I don't think they have the ability to grant that in the ordinances.
Who made the ordinances, town?
I'm sure they mean.
I'm sure that there's a way. I think you can talk about it and see that that happens. I just don't think that it's fair to paying the prices we're paying for muddy, rocky water. Iron a hundred times too much. Then I have to go down here to Ingles to buy more clean drinking water. In the store. I mean, that's just it. And I'll fight it till whenever. Come back every weekend. I have to every time the meeting's coming. That right there. Should never have happened, ever. And this year, that's off of a clean day, non-raining day. The water couldn't come through this meter. So we took the meter off and the first water out of that was this. And it'll happen again. And it's every, just think now, it's every house up through there that's doing the same thing. That's all I gotta say. I just wanna get it fixed.
Okay, Janet.
Soon as possible.
Alright, have a good night. Alright, next up with storm drain on Laurie Street. I don't, not sure who requested that.
Um, that was, uh. I kinda talked to Chad about that year last week or something because we're fixing the. Start pouring concrete on Brandon building down there. And. With all the. Stormwater and stuff draining down there, I don't, it don't look like that collection office. It might make the engineer look and maybe do a bigger collection because there's a lot of water goes into that.
Yeah. Well, see, that's part of the plan that we've been working on that Laurie Street project for years.
Yeah.
And it's, it's held a lot of it up because of reality.
Yeah. So I didn't know whether that was.
I mean, we could talk to, we could talk to Joe about it, see if that needs to be done.
Yeah, I know. I went down there the other day and I mean, it was like, find all that. All that box is gonna be able to stand if they can find gun from anywhere else. I don't know. It might not be that far in the project either. That might be the next. Next stay up in it.
So as soon as we get our audit done and stuff, they can get stored on the new.
They've had their funding froze because of that.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just think that might be the issues I, I'll, I'll bring it up.
Okay. Alright. Alright, next up, Judson Orr Water Vehicle.
Yeah, he's not here, but. What happened with that, let me think, uh. So his water, he had Chad verified that from where he's at, there was like a lot of air went through his meter. And. It wasn't brought to anyone's attention or it wasn't brought to my attention. I don't know if it was brought to anyone's or not. But whenever I pulled it up and was asking Chad about, had an extremely high water bill. Like several months back and he's been, his water was shut off for, because it was so far behind. But he's been every week coming in, making payments on this water bill. Might have spoke to you guys about it. Anyway, when in reality, he didn't owe that water bill because it was air that went through the lines. Chad said that it should have been corrected months ago when it happened.
Yes.
But it wasn't. So now the question is, is if we can turn water back on.
I mean, if it's not.
Because now he's made enough payments to where. Once that bill was corrected because of the air. Then it will create him a credit, but not only just hooking his water back up. When it's turned off, you have to pay a deposit and a reconnect fee. When essentially, he should have never been turned off.
Right.
So I guess what he's asking is, is like forgiveness from the deposit because he's already paid a deposit. And a reconnect fee because it essentially shouldn't have been turned off.
Right. If he didn't use that water, he shouldn't have had to pay for it. Shouldn't have been cut off.
We can, we can, um. Discuss it later.
I don't know if he brought it to Amanda's attention or not, the Judson, whenever she was here.
So you haven't cut his water back on yet?
No, because it needed, we needed approval. Because he's not wanting to have to pay a deposit or reconnect fee which. Had the bill correction been made whenever all of that air was pushed through the system, he wouldn't owe that bill. He was turned off because he's, he was behind on that bill.
Verified that it was, that he didn't owe it.
Which Chad said that he remembered that time frame whenever that happened. He said, yeah, he knew exactly. There was a bunch of air went through that line. There was something that happened in that area. Okay, back to the Judson Orr. Uh, I don't know if you remember, I'd spoke with you guys about all that, about the air being in the line and it running up to his water bill and he didn't, I don't know if he didn't bring it to anyone's attention or if he didn't know. I don't know. It's not all of that, but he was asking if he could get his water hooked back up without having to pay another deposit and another reconnect fee. Because essentially, had the bill been corrected whenever air ran through the meter, it shouldn't have been turned off.
I'll make a motion that we cut his water back on and, um, do away with the reconnect fee and everything.
I'll say they can do it. Okay, but all right, Janet. So you're gonna waive this reconnect fee and?
Yes.
No, in the deposit, in that deposit.
And tell Chad when we get his water turned on tomorrow.
Okay. They won't be here though.
I think Judson wanted to know beforehand, so I can get up with him this afternoon and find out if it's okay. If it's turned off tomorrow, if he wanted to wait.
Okay.
Cause he's been, I think he had to move temporarily while his water was off.
Next up, I wanted to give an update on our two test wells. Both of them are producing a lot of water in the property we, we purchased next to our existing well system. And I just wanted to show how, how efficient just operating the wells are. Just by utilizing our two existing wells, we saved four thousand three hundred and sixteen, sixteen hours in water treatment as well as wastewater treatment. And just based off a standard labor rate, that's saving over a hundred thousand dollars a year. That's something I wanted to do from, uh, back from two thousand seventeen, but I faced an extreme amount of opposition on it. But you can see how effective and efficient that was. We could have been saving all this money for years. And next up is, uh, paper veiling. I've been noticing, I first noticed it before, noticed it before the June meeting and Amanda was having to sort out the water bills prior to taking them to the post office. Is that something the, the post office told employees to do or?
No. The post office has never told them to do that. I know it made it easier for them to get them all sorted out if it was created by route instead of having to take those water bills and, and resort all of them. Most of the time do they come alphabetically? I don't have a clue. How long does that take? Amanda said. Chris done it the other day. How long does it take?
Amanda said it took over an hour. I helped her sort them before the June meeting even.
If that wastes time for you and you don't have time to do it, don't do it.
I mean, I don't see no reason our, our employees should be paid by water sewer customers to sort the bills for the post office.
They're, it's fine.
I don't know who told them to do that.
Don't have a clue neither. It's been doing that way for years.
No, Amanda said only recently she had to stop doing that.
No, that's not true. That's not true. Sherry done it. It's been that way for years. Yeah.
Well, that's the first time I've observed them doing it.
Well, I'm sorry, but it has been done or get for a very, very long time.
All right.
So don't waste your time doing that if it's gonna be a problem. But I would advise you to pull the ones that are out of state and stuff, separate from it.
All right. Next up is, uh, on the rules of procedure. According to our Town of Robinsville's Rules of Board Procedure. The, the, uh, creation of the agenda, it mentions the mayor and the town clerk should prepare, prepare the agenda for each meeting. And I've been doing that for a long time, making the agenda, and the board took that away from me last year. So I'd like the creation of the agenda returned to me according to Rob, the Town of Robinsville's Rules of Board Procedure.
I left, didn't know anybody changed on that.
Didn't know who was doing the agenda. Who done the agenda today? Is she our town? Is she our? If she can't do it, then you do it or you want it entirely?
I'd done it after you fired Sonja.
Do you want to do it or do you want her to?
I'd done it for years.
But do you want to do it now? You wanna take it from her and be solely responsible for it? Just so that she'll be clear, so that she won't be trying to create.
That's the way I was doing, yes, until, until the board took it away from me last year.
I didn't know we took it away, but I ain't got a problem with it.
All right. Okay then. Next up was Amy Reed, no water pressure for house appliances. Do you remember that?
Janet, Bill brought that to Amy to fill out. I, I think she was speaking out of.
So is she in those houses that Janet was talking about?
She just brought it with her and let her fill it out or she would?
Janet brought it. I'm assuming she is.
Yeah. And there's nothing we can do. It's no.
Oh. I don't know. Just, um, no action on that? All right. So we have something for closed session.
We do.
All right. We have a motion to go into closed.
Motion to go into closed.
Stay there.
Where are you going?
Pursuant to the press provisions of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A three and one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven C, I move it to Town of Robinsville Town Council, go into closed session to discuss and take action regarding the plans to protect public safety as it relates to existing potential.
Was it, was it personnel issue count? Okay, yeah, this, yeah, this person, I chose the personnel motion.
Session and purpose of considering personnel matters as defined by and allowed by North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A six and North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash one sixty-eight.
Oh.
I'm gonna make a motion that we give, um, Chris Williams a raise for going through the wastewater operation class and passing it. Um, Chris paid for this on his own, but the town has agreed that any employee that goes through these classes and passes, that they get a paid increase.
I'll say. All right. All right, if we don't have any further business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to, make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say. All right. Meeting adjourned at five fifty more.